Nobody who has never did drugs wakes up in the morning and says, "I think I'll go do some meth today." "I think I'll take some oxycontin," or "I think I'll shoot up some heroin." Drug abuse starts with alcohol. They take a drink, their mind is altered, their decision making is altered. Somebody passes them a marijuana cigarette, or maybe a pill, and they begin to retake it. I know this from my life. That's where our drug abuse starts, that is where it all begins. One of the easiest ways to help combat the drug problem is not to loosen the regulations on alcohol.
Yes.
Don't tell our young people that there are no dangers from alcohol by making it more convenient for them to drink. The drug problem is in our twenties to thirty-somethings. It's young families who are dying and whose kids are lost. Don't make it more convenient for their mind to be altered and possibly be pulled down that road. No amount of revenue generated by taxes or new business opened because of alcohol sales on Sunday will ever offset the damages created by the secondary effects of alcohol misuse. The choice is in your hands, how much regulation we need as a community. I don't believe voting against this ordinance will stop people from drinking. I don't think it'll stop alcohol and drug-related problems or deaths on Sunday. People who want to drink on Sunday, we will, we know that. Whether it was from the bootlegger or from wherever, we know they will drink if they want to drink Sunday. But there's a chance, there is a chance, and I would take that chance if I was you, that it will prevent one DUI, prevent one alcohol-related tragedy or death, or it might prevent that one spark from starting in someone and heading them down the path of destruction from drugs. Because that's the way the drug addiction starts. It's just like a forest fire, it starts with one spark. We can never have enough money to fight the drug problem once it's become rampant. We can prevent a little of the sparring. Good old common sense tells me, and I think we'll all agree with this, if this passes, there'll be more impaired drivers on the road and more people whose minds are impaired by alcohol in our community on Sunday than before. People will drink just because it's allowed. In closing, if you vote yes for this ordinance, I hope in five years you'll be able to look back and say that it was the best decision for Mount Sterling because of the increased revenue brought into the community and the choices of restaurants that you had to eat at. That's my hope. My prayer is that you're not wishing you had never voted yes because an impaired driver took the life of your mother, or your father, or your son, or your daughter, your brother, or your sister, your best friend, or your coworker. Or a family member started using drugs just because the decision making was clouded after a few drinks on Sunday. We've lost some really good people in this community through the alcohol misuse and drugs in this community. So I respectfully ask you to keep the current regulations in place and vote no for alcohol sales by the drink on Sunday.
Thank you.
Well, my name's Brenda Stone, I live on sixteen Reed Avenue. I don't have anything prepared, I'm gonna talk from my heart. I have always been against alcohol, so I don't put anybody down for drinking. I think that's their privilege, that's their choice if they want to have something to control them like that. But my husband was brought up in an alcoholic home, and it does have effects. People that drink say it doesn't, but you can take a look, and it does have effects. It does affect people. Right now, we go out tea every Sunday, and we like to go to different restaurants. We take our children, we take our grandchildren, we take my mother. I don't want to go where they're drinking. I don't want to have my choices so limited because this city was so... It was so important to have more restaurants come in. I want to be proud of this city. I wanted to say that it's a city that stands up for what's right, that will stand for all of the community, not just the ones that want to drink. So I beg you all, our daughter was hit by a drunk driver, and he had been picked up eight times prior and still was driving without insurance and a drunk driver. Now, it was on a Sunday. That's not significant, it could have happened at another time. But when you see people that you care about that are hit by drunk drivers and their heads cut open and they lose part of their mobility, it will change your life. So I pray that you all will pray about this decision. You know, we had prayer before we started. Pray about this decision, because you all have the county or the city and the county in your hands with this decision.
Thank you.
I only have a couple comments.
State's name and address, please.
Stan Romanes, federal economic director of the New York City Drive. I just want everybody to have a informed decision, and because of my position, I know some of the facts of this data. Number one, I have drug addicts in my family, so I know where they come from and how they start. It's not always alcohol. And I'm not a drinker, I don't drink, and I have breast cancer. So there's lots of things that affect those things. And our drug addicts aren't just young people, they're old people too. But the restaurant situation, since I've been in my position for thirteen years, I've been asked numerous times, "When are we gonna get a steakhouse? When are we gonna get a good restaurant? When are we gonna get steakhouse?" Numerous times. And I can tell them that will make a difference in recruiting restaurants and other businesses. I just want everybody to make an informed decision, and I wanted to say that.
But they can still sell alcohol in those restaurants Monday through Saturday. They don't have a sale on Sundays, so they shouldn't make any decisions.
Just let the people come up and make the statements up here, let's don't argue back and forth. And wait for Smith, Miss Walker, we need to get some other people up here if you don't mind. Okay, anybody else? Okay?
I did not plan to speak, didn't prepare anything except for my heart.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Gary Hudson, I live at one three fifteen West Main Street in Mount Sterling. I spoke five years ago when folks brought this up. I'm gonna tell them again my story again. I was left virtually an orphan at the end of the Depression because my dad was killed, cut in two right here completely. We'll forget the funeral. Because Arkansas, my little town, Fort Smith, was dry. He'd gone over to Oklahoma Mofett where it was wet. And he got sauced, and at ten o'clock, he and his buddy were killed in a car accident. And I know all of you guys probably lived like I did, but you know, the best present we got the first Christmas was a sack of sweet potatoes. It's a hard thing for us to hold. Now, I have a son who was a very successful attorney. He lost his license, he lost his successful business, had to start all over again because he became addicted to alcohol, as many attorneys do because of the stress of the job. Luckily, we were able to afford help for him, and he has now been free of alcohol for one year. I wish you were here. The last thing I want to say is that I probably have spoken and know more drug addicts in this community and this county than anyone, including the councils around, because that's been my calling to do and help those people since I've been in Mount Sterling. I can tell you that in almost every case, alcohol is accompanied with drug abuse. I am not saying that alcohol caused the drug abuse, but I am telling you that those that are addicted to drugs find it very easy to consume alcohol. And they do it when they can and where they can, and they use the money to buy whatever they crave or they want. Just quite honestly, I'll be very disappointed in this council if this amendment and this ordinance is approved tonight. I was told by two or three people hearsay that your minds are made up. That tells me that you're not following the democratic process. This should have been through referendum and a public vote. It should not be in the hands of you. You few, who are a very minute percent of the citizens, even though you were voted. And the reason some of you have this job, quite honestly, is because nobody ran against you.
Anybody else? All right, poll members, please.
Lawrence.
Hi.
Judy.
Ah.
Cormick.
Ah.
Pruitt.
Uh.
Tipton.
Ah.
Trimble.
No.
Tuttle.
Ah.
Wilson.
No.
Okay. Chief Charles, would you inform us what you've been doing the last few days?
Because of Sunday, they need to spread out. We finalized a total investigation, which we were leading investigation, leading investigation. We registered four people on several traffic charges, seized property, vehicles, so forth and so on. They're now in Mount High School, so I think we're just another thing here. Don't see anything about that. This is conjunction with DVA. Can you hear me? That's the first time I ever heard you. Shut up. But so we were able to do that Monday. We also branched out. We, our Pundestown lab team cleansed up nineteen meth labs yesterday. We started in the morning helping the sheriff department and the Maryland County Regional Jail. We finished up last night at eleven-thirty, and total of nineteen. We do have a person of interest who will be prosecuted at this. I spoke with prosecutors, and they intend to offer our persons solicitation for all our expenses and charges. We've been reviewing the last few days. Also, since we have a large crowd, it'd be a good time for me to address this issue.
Yeah.
I've received several comments and so forth on our recent vehicular operations that we had done at the place park. We have two older Humvees that have given to us, the United States Government. These are people free of us. If they tear up, I take them back. If they break, I take them back. If we wreck them, I take them back. They have liability insurance on them, so we carry them. One of them has been painted through donations by a local businessman who does not wish to be thanked in public for it. So I'm not saying anything about sending that to my understanding here. He took care of all that for us, and it's why it looks like. The other one will be painted, they are to be used for, as part of our disaster emergency preparedness. We all know what happened to us, so we couldn't get around, and ground units at first were stuck. We're also going to use them for narcotics operations, they'll be used for that as well. One of them will be used for our meth truck, because we almost contaminated one of our trucks yesterday. And these things are easy to get contaminated, because they're all metal, because they're... Councilman Martin's come down to look down on what we're doing and so forth. And right now, I think I'm into them for about sixty dollars worth of diesel fuel that we put in them and three garbage bags, so.
Are they both diesel?
Yes, sir. They're both V6 diesels, twenty thousand and thirty thousand miles respectively on each of them.
What are they, H2s or?
No, they're H1s.
H1?
They're full military version, and set up for deep water operations, they'll run in floodwater, which is always a good thing for us. But anyway, we are also now exploring in getting the generators under the same program to use. I've talked to the fire chief, talked, we have a plan that we're implementing for disasters. And now I'm trying currently to get the generators under the same program, and free, to what we can bring. They're not for buildings permanently, they're on wheels. But we can, if we have a disaster, we will be able to power up our shelters and so forth.
Hope we never need them.
Did you say you cleaned up nineteen meth labs?
Nineteen, yes, because of yesterday morning, we've done nine all year.
Okay, so it makes a total of twenty-eight, yes?
Right in the city.
No, part of them were, sir, part of them were not. It's the same cook, but he is... We averred of an environmental disaster with this. The jail's cleanup crew's at Walgreen County, it's a couple of the predominantly. But there was a farm located in Pruitt and...
Fog Pike?
Fog Pike, thank you. I observed that they had been in the... And they had thrown them out, and it's in the watershed leaking into this pond. And these were the last ones that we found, it was beginning to rain. And if these chemicals from this had leached into that, this pond was used to water his entire herd of cattle. He would have lost them. So unfortunately, we got these cleaned up before.
How many officers were involved with that on the city, please?
There was all day long, seven, and eight deputies, and I want to say four who was in.
So completed yourself?
Yes, sir, I started with the first one.
Who pays those salaries for those people?
We do.
Who's we?
The city.
The city, yes.
City pays for us, county pays for the county.
And where does the city get the revenues to pay those salaries?
Tax fees.
And other sources of revenue, correct?
That's correct.
If you didn't have those sources of revenue, what would happen to the drug trade in this town?
If we start forever, I'll have to go back to working that before.
For the worse?
Always.
So any sources of revenue that we can find to help you combat this problem, you need, is that correct?
I want you there.
Revenue sources that are... Revenue sources that increase.
Do you need money to fund the fight against drugs in this community, yes or no?
We all do, yes, sir.
And if we don't have the money to give to you, through any source that we can find, what happens? You fold up, right? That's all you can know, Francis. I appreciate it, too.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jamie Allison. Jamie Allison?
She was here.
Is Jamie out there?
She was, her. There she is.
Could you step up here, please, Ms. Allison, and quote him and tell us your name and your address, please?
My name is Jamie Allison, and my address is one seventy-five Collins Avenue. But we have two rental properties, two oh two and two oh four North Queen Street. And actually, my husband's here tonight, so he's gonna actually talk a bit more about this problem. And I'm gonna...
Council, my name's Ryan Allison, Jamie Allison's husband. I'm a co-owner, I guess with several other people, and Apple Tree Properties. We have two rental properties in the region of the city. And as you may know, there was a string of fires, I guess that's gonna be what's coming up. And one of the fires was next door to one of our rental properties. And we sit, the Fire Department did a fabulous job of setting out the fire and also saving our house. But the problem we have now is there is one wall that remains, and we'll pass around photographs to show you. Out of the house that was down, there remains one wall still standing. And this is in the North Queen, and it's one of the instances you can stand between both of the houses and not be able to stake your elbows out without touching its house. So the problem we're finding ourselves in is that this wall is actually ready to fall in on our rental property. And I understand that North Queen is sometimes causes problems for the community that there's criminal activity.
Is that one of the houses that they raided recently for drugs?
I don't think it was one that they raided, but the owner is someone who is now incarcerated.
For the same, he owns both houses. Did both houses burn recently, too?
Yes. He...
Victims of the draft raid, would you imagine?
Well, he owns multiple properties on this street, they're not close together, so they burn on separate instances.
Hope we don't have any more.
Right, exactly. But that being said, the reason I'm here is that we rent these houses through HUD. And so we're able to really screen our applicants. And the HUD process itself really requires that these people go through a lot of screening. So we're renting to really good people. But this house is in a position that's under this wall that's ready to fall in. We're ready to lose that status, because it's a danger, not only to people who are currently living there, but the HUD inspectors will come out and they'll just say, "No, there's no way." And so we're gonna go back to probably being forced to just rent more money, which I think is in everybody's best interest that we continue to rent it, HUD allows. You can see in those photographs what we have, we actually have four-by-fours, two of whatever we can find, propping up this wall, it's literally... And these boards are ready to, there's so much tension on there about the snap. Now, I did a tire search on the property, as good as Crystal is doing its tire search. So I was, I'm a lawyer in town, by the way, I always refer all of my tire search business to Crystal. But I tempted one myself, and I noticed that this property, the one that burned, has a lot of weed leaves on it from the city. This has been a property that's never been maintained, and obviously now, what's the point for the owner to maintain with any more of the houses? He's got no interest in maintaining it. So really, what I'm here to ask the council to do is to, in some way, help us either enforce the cleanup of this property. And I'm not trying to say that my property is more important than anyone else's, but I am saying in this instance, we do have a safety concern. Our current renters have children who live there. We're constantly going over there checking this place out. It's a simple wall that needs to be pulled back. How that's gonna affect our HUD, I don't know, but I just... And we've been speaking with code enforcement, so I know the ability is there for the city to do something. So I'm just here today to ask the council, and I'd be more than happy to keep a channel of communication open with the council, the code enforcement, whatever needs to be done.
So what have they said, Ryan? What does code enforcement tell you?
Well, Jamie just had a conversation with code enforcement, saying that he's aware of the problem now. We're on the list, but we're down on the list. That they're receiving bids to clean this property up. And that's kind of it. So we're just to the point now where we're literally waiting for these supporters to snap and this wall to continue on and into our property. So that being said, the individual is incarcerated, he's in jail. I'm pretty confident he's gonna move on to prison after this. And so he's got no interest in doing anything to remedy this problem. And because code enforcement has already been out there, and the city has already attached so many liens to this place, I think the city is well aware of it. So I'm asking for help, and again, I'd be happy to have any kind of open channels with you guys to try to figure something out.
I've talked to your father-in-law, Mr. Burden, about it a couple of weeks ago, and I've had an opportunity to talk to the fire chief about it. And the reason it hasn't been touched or taken down or anything like that is because there's a state arson investigation going on on it. Asked him to check into that and see if he could find out when that would be complete or have anything back. So I questioned you, have you heard anything from the chief or anybody from the...
Well, I've got experience in wherever I'm actually, if I'm criminal. I know that anytime you want to ask the status of the investigation or how's...
Reserved evidence.
The only thing they'll say is it was pending, this time is all I'm telling you. So that's our answer.
What's the code state for if a fire has totaled a residence? Where is Mike, is he in here? Code enforcement officer. I think he might be in here. Hey, Mike, what's the code read that after a fire's totaled a residence, how long do they have to clean it up?
There's no set time, why would it lose that? I have to put the law in there for it, my team, then, you know, thirty days to contact me, or it's practically in prison. I can, according to the code book, I can order a property razed and cleaned off, but it all comes down to money. I don't have a budget, so, you know, with that list of country properties that we have, more taxes on and all, it's a system.
But you see this problem, you've been up there and seen this problem. And this wall is gonna go against that house. They oughta move to the top of your list. And just, it oughta be taken care of, you're the code enforcement officer.
Then I need some money to fix it with it.
Right. I mean, we've got one that's been longer than that up on Harrison Avenue that hasn't been...
It's a danger, I mean, all these...
It's a danger.
You say you've got walls down, too.
Can't pull a down. If we pull a wall down, we just...
So all we need...
Pull the wall.
To pull a wall down.
I want more of it.
Did you ever ask Steve Lane if he could get that wall down?
I've talked to some of the guy down there. I talked to Steve before I explained this to him, but he turned about that.
Liability?
All this equipment is covered higher.
Yeah, but if we get the wall down first, then we worry about cleaning it up.
Well, no, not about cleaning anything up, we're talking about knocking the wall down.
Pretty much take care of it.
Well, that would be some initial concerns, you know, safely running out of cars falling on your house, right?
We would love to do that for you, but we still have to confirm with the state fire marshal.
Can we get the state...
If we go in there and remember then, then they're gonna have us.
No, can we approach them and say, "All right, we take that wall down."
Yeah, right, exactly, that's what I...
Just bring it back up there and find the code.
Well, if you, if, I've got assets. If we don't have a budget for you to spend, it's only the third month of our year, isn't it?
July and August.
Yeah. What are we doing, why are we paying you?
I've never had a budget. I've had, we've had over forty houses that went down and razed and others, you know, fixed up. Don't any other community that's going for a budget, I think Gary T didn't have to own down forty houses.
And you tore down forty houses with no budget?
Exactly.
Sure as hell turned down a lot. We just want to... Yes, man, tear this down and clean this property for forty-five hundred dollars. See if you can't find out if we can't just get the wall down, then we worry about cleaning it up later.
I tell you what, if we come up with some extra funds somewhere or another in the next little bit, well, I would put any, anything that is gonna be detrimental to the house next door, I don't care if we clean the whole thing up, but this is, I thought this is amazing. You know, that we haven't at least done something to knock the wall over. And if there's another one, where on Harrison?
When did the fire start?
It was probably about three and a half weeks ago, so I...
Okay, so it's been less than a month?
Yes, it's been a half.
Three and a half weeks. I mean, I'm on my chain, Lawrence.
Why don't you do that?
I'm on my chain and see where he is on it.
If we can get those paid from the state fire marshal.
We'll have to come look at the wall and see where he can get to.
I need an approximate, and what's the address?
Well, it's one of the things you do, we had and we don't have now, at one time we were able to do this. The reason why we could do this was we had a HUD housing agency that would come in, told the person, we would come in and pay the city back for our costs. We could do demolition, we could do legal work, we could do the whole nine yards, and they would pay us what we had invested in this lot. But unfortunately, these people have gone out of business, and there's nobody out there right now that wants to take up this banner and go with it. You know, you're talking about how many structures, I know of three that's fire-related, or four that's fire-related, and the estimate to clean this up was forty-five hundred dollars, so... Or sixty thousand dollars, so... Worth some money. So we can't hang this on Michael, it's like telling him, "Go out here and swing the dragon," but they go...
Don't kill the president.
He should be with him, so...
Mike, we'll try to get our chain, I'll get you in my office, we'll try to...
I'll try to change the floor, but, you know, on the picture.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allison. All right.
All right, Shannon Diston.